Now I'm ready. I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for April 9th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Good evening, everybody, and happy National Library Day. It's a cool day. Today, we will start with a presentation on the Metro food scrap policy. Our consent agenda includes approval of the March 12th, 2019, regular meeting minutes, approval of the February bank balances, budget report for period ending February 28th, 2019, approval of the February check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports from March 2019, Resolution 1157, adopting the mutual agreement order between the City of Gladstone and the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, also called DEQ, Resolution 1158, amending the use of Right of Way, R-O-W, funds to include streets, sewer, storm, and water. Our regular meeting agenda includes the community festival application, Ordinance 1496, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, also called the GMC, Chapter 9.60, camping prohibited in certain places, Section 9.60.030, violation penalty to a Class B violation, Resolution 1156, update on public contracting rules, and report from the Gladstone School District Board, Kristin Eaton, who I do not see, hopefully she will show up. Tammy, could you please call the roll? Counselor Ripley?
Here.
Counselor Neef?
Present.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a couple of additions. One is I handed you a staff report to appoint John Schmerber as the new Gladstone Police Chief, and if we could add that as Item 9A on your agenda. In addition, under Business Carried Forward, we would like to discuss the complaint on the parks rules that the City Council received a week ago. And I believe that's it for now.
So are we going to remove the public records request for attorney's bill? Are we going to do that one also?
Well, that is on your packet, and we'll update you on that as well.
Okay.
We're just adding one more under there, so you have three.
Right.
And the third one will be to give you an update on the complaint regarding park rules.
Okay. Great. And that's it?
Yes.
All right. So first is presentation on the Metro food scrap policy. Hi. Are you doing that, Bob?
Good evening. I am Reba, your Right of Way contract coordinator. With me is Evan Polk from the county. And we're just going to give you some information on the food scraps for businesses that's mandated by Metro that the council has to adopt by July 31st. There's about 25 to 30 businesses in Gladstone is the best guess that would be affected by this policy. And I'll be back on May 14th with the actual code to adopt into the Gladstone Municipal Code. So Evan's going to give a little bit more information about what it covers, what it affects, and what the requirements are.
Okay.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, Counselors. Again, for the record, my name is Evan Polk, and I'm the supervisor for Clackamas County's Sustainability and Solid Waste Program. We have been part of the policy committee that Metro convened over the past couple of years to develop what became the ordinance that they adopted last year that will require local governments such as Clackamas County and our cities that are within the Metro District to adopt implementing ordinances that require businesses to generate enough food waste to collect that food waste for separate processing so that it does not go to the landfill. And we were last here on this topic in the fall, or towards the end of 2017. At that point, Metro was poised to adopt an ordinance in early 2018, but they decided to postpone that. And so it's been a little bit quiet from your perspective during 2018 because Metro didn't adopt the ordinance until mid-2018, and then they adopted administrative rules towards the end of last calendar year. And we and our cities within the Metro District boundary have until July 31st to adopt implementing ordinances that meet Metro's ordinance and admin rules. So I have been asked to keep this pretty brief, and I will do my best to do so. I will probably have to skip past some of the slides that we prepared for you, some of which are similar to what was shared in late 2017. And so I'll gloss past some of that, but please pause if you have a clarification question. So this is something that Metro and local governments have been working on for at least 20 years. Food waste is a material that has a lot of value from the perspective of energy and climate change. In many ways, it just doesn't really belong in the garbage. It's valuable because it can be turned into compost, or energy, or other nutrients that then, if it's in the landfill, we can't reuse that. But if it's something that we put through a separate processing facility, we can recover and can be used to the benefit of agriculture, for example. This is just a brief picture of how much food we generate in the Metro region. The bar on the left shows that we have about 5,000 semi-trucks worth of food in our garbage. And on the other hand, the far-right column shows that we are currently recovering through existing programs in about 1,200 businesses, a pretty small fraction of the food waste that we generate in the region.
And this is all commercial?
This is... So the middle bar shows what is coming from the commercial sector. So as you can see, the difference between the bar on the right and the middle bar, there's a pretty big opportunity to collect more commercial food waste. And in many jurisdictions throughout the region, the program is already available on an optional basis, but many businesses have not yet opted in. Gladstone, the service is not yet available, but our understanding from B&amp;B Leasing is that they will provide the service when they are asked to do so. Okay. So there are several reasons why we're talking about capturing food. And there are a couple of reasons that you might not be familiar with. I mentioned the energy and sort of material value of that food waste. But it's also something that we want to chase after because we have a goal at the state level to recover 25% of our wasted food by 2020. Also, having a separation requirement could open doors to helping restaurants and grocery stores reduce their food waste and donate more edible food. Because when they separate it, it becomes more obvious what the opportunity is to either donate it or reduce and save money. It also happens to be on a list of menu items in Oregon Administrative Rules that we can pick from in trying to reach compliance with statewide opportunity to recycle requirements. So it gives us... That's another little benefit. And then another thing is that if we'd like to do a better job sorting the garbage that's left over when we get the food out, we might have more opportunities to do that in the future. Because you can imagine food waste is pretty nasty in the garbage. If you can separate it out and get it into a valuable process, now you have the opportunity potentially to recover more value from what's in the garbage because it's not being messed up by the food. We are talking specifically about commercial food waste, not food waste from people's homes. There are plenty of local governments that have asked their collection provider to offer that service at the residential level, too, but that's not what this ordinance is about. Okay. You would have seen a slide something along these lines in the last presentation. I'll just update you. Towards the bottom of this slide, you can see that in July of last year, Metro Council, after two public comment periods in 2017 and 2018, adopted the resolution ordinance. They did an extensive amount of outreach to the business community. More than 2,000 food-related businesses received a letter or a postcard offering them an opportunity to comment. And they also did a specific survey of somewhere around 350 to 400 businesses. When comments came back from businesses around this proposal, they were almost all supportive. The only one that was in opposition was actually not really opposed. It was just about asking for sort of a different change to the program so it would cost them less. So in general, I will just underscore that outreach to the business committee that Metro did was fairly extensive, more than what we've typically seen them do in developing proposals like this in the past. And then in December, we, Clackamas County, you, Gladstone, we all received letters from Metro saying, hey, we've adopted this ordinance, and we've adopted the admin rules. And the clock is now ticking, and by July 31st, you need to adopt an implementing ordinance that fits underneath their umbrella ordinance. This is more of a historic slide that just gives you a sense for what direction Metro Council gave their staff when they set out on this process in 2016. The project that we're talking about today is the first one of the three. So Metro has a kind of a broader perspective on how to set the stage for food scraps collection to be successful in the region, and this is one piece of that. We would also mention to you that there are about 7,000 food service-related businesses in the region, and about 3,000 of them could be affected by the policy. Those numbers are still being changed. Right now, Metro is redoing their model for estimating how much food waste different businesses generate. So it's still... That's a general guess. So the policy basically says that local governments, if you have five or more food-related businesses that would be covered by this policy, it's now in effect. And for Gladstone, that means we think, our best guess right now is 25 to 30 businesses or somewhere in that range, might be covered by the policy by the time the third phase kicks in. We'll get there in a moment, but I say, this phase is in over five years. So early on, it would only touch a couple of businesses in Gladstone. Covered businesses are those that cook, assemble, process, serve, or sell food, and that generate at least 250 pounds of food waste a week. To imagine what that might look like, that's probably about a 32-gallon roll cart, just food. So if you generate that much or more, you would eventually be covered by this policy. In the early phases, you would only be covered if you generate at least four roll carts worth of food waste every week. So think Costco, or some large restaurants and grocery stores. Here, in fact, is a little icon that illustrates that. So Business Group 1, their compliance period would start in March 31st, 2020. So if you adopt an ordinance anytime between now and July 31st, there's going to be several months of lead time for businesses, for us to do outreach with them, get them acquainted with what the ordinance says. And that's the beginning of their compliance period. So they would actually have another, basically, year after March 31st, 2020 to wrap up compliance. And that, again, is for businesses with 1,000 pounds per week of food waste generated. Then Phase 2, businesses with 500 pounds per week of food waste generated. And finally, Business Group 3, out in 2022 is when they would need to start complying, and that's if they generate 250 pounds per week of food waste or more. So we've... We, as you may not know this, but Clackamas County, on behalf of all the cities in the county, does technical assistance, outreach, and education to businesses, schools, and residents to meet statewide opportunity to recycle requirements. And so we have a longstanding relationship with many businesses in Gladstone, and we'll very easily be able to pivot into working with them to implement this ordinance. And knowing the businesses as we do in Gladstone, we've got a rough estimate of who we think would be covered by this, by the policy. We think there are around 25 to 30 businesses that generate enough food waste to eventually be covered by this in the future. And it's probably only two or three businesses in Group 1. Safeway, which would be, is actually already doing this, and then possibly one of the larger retirement communities. Phase 2, we think there might be five to 10 restaurants that could be covered by this. And then in Group 3, that includes schools. And we also have a robust schools program and would help all three Gladstone schools.
Including our senior center is in this, just so you're aware, too. And Senior Center Manager Owen Black's aware of the impacts that it would do to his budget for that.
Or Group 3.
I'm not sure if they're in Group 2 or Group 3, but they are not in Group 1, so...
Okay. So there are admin rules, and we can talk through those in greater detail at a future date, I would say. This is a snapshot of some of the stakeholder outreach that Metro, as the lead agency, conducted over the past 16 months or so. In general, businesses have responded, you know, in different ways, as you might imagine. We haven't heard opposition from very many. Most of them, many of them are in favor, and those who have concerns just want to know that they're going to get help to comply when the time comes. And we will be poised and ready to help them with that when the time comes. This is a little snapshot of how the roles break down from a city's perspective when it comes to implementing this ordinance. So you can see Metro is going to take care of region-wide compliance, and then a couple of other elements there. Distance payments to collectors, that's going to be basically a reimbursement, in this case, to B&amp;B Leasing, for the cost of their additional time in trucking food waste further than it would normally have to go. So that'll help defray some of the additional costs for the program in the community. Metro is also providing jurisdictions with funding support to provide the technical assistance. So again, we would ramp up our efforts to help businesses in Gladstone comply. It's on the cities to adopt the local ordinance and to have a plan for enforcement. I'm on the left column here. And one of the things that we want to raise for you, not necessarily for a decision today, of course, but how you want to handle the process of waivers. The administrative rules allow for a city to grant a business a waiver if there's a hardship or some specific reason they are struggling to comply. It could be that the infrastructure they have on-site is a problem, or that in complying, they might violate a different local ordinance. Who knows? But if the city would like, you could administer that waiver program, or you could ask us to administer that on your behalf. And that's something to be considering. And the county will take care of having the implementation plan, doing outreach and notification to businesses, providing technical assistance, and reporting to Metro. So this is what's next. July 31st is our deadline to adopt an implementing ordinance. And then in February of next year, we plan to submit on behalf of us and all the cities in the county that are under this ordinance and implementation plan that Gladstone would have a hand in developing so that we can be confident that you're comfortable with how we plan to implement this within the city. I will stop there, and...
So I would add that I've been working with Kim and the code enforcement team here at Gladstone as to how we are going to implement this program. So we've been working on that, and we'll bring that back to you on May 14th to talk about the waivers and the enforcement procedure that we do have to do. So the county's working with us as well as how we're actually going to implement that and what that would look like. So we'll bring that back to you on May 14th with the actual ordinance.
And Reba, thank you. That reminds me, there's one other thing I neglected to say. I did mention that Gladstone has not yet... You have not yet asked your franchisee to provide this service in the city. When you do that, we would encourage you to do what we're calling bundling the rates. Think about recycling. Right now, it doesn't cost a business any extra to have recycling containers that are enough to do adequate recycling. It's just part of the blended rate that B&amp;B Leasing charges to customers in the city. We have done that in Clackamas County, in urban unincorporated county, decided to just incorporate that cost into the overall customer cost for businesses so that they're not penalized when they start participating. In other words, they can get a compost container and start participating without any additional cost because those costs are incorporated into the overall commercial rate. We think it'll make it much easier for businesses to participate. And again, we won't be penalizing them for doing the right thing by getting this material out of the garbage. So we would recommend that.
Evan, we can request that after the council implements an ordinance, correct? Okay.
Yeah. You have time to think through that in the six to eight months after the ordinance is adopted.
We can negotiate that with B&amp;B and their request, their current request.
Are you ready for questions? I'm sure we're going to have a couple. He's got sticky notes everywhere.
Well, I'll start with what you just ended with, the rate. So everybody, commercial would pay then?
Right. So the way we've done it for urban unincorporated county is that any commercial, you know, customer has access to that service if they want it.
What service?
The food collection service.
Okay. So if you own a restaurant, a supermarket, the ones on this list, they're going to pay more than what... Sorry, Dr. Bob, but the Dr. Bob's going to be paying as a dentist.
In general, that's true because they generate a lot more garbage.
But well, not... But rate-wise, they're going to be paying more because of this ordinance, correct?
Well, not in unincorporated Clackamas County. Again, they do...
I'm talking about Gladstone.
Right. So that'll be your...
I don't live in the county.
Right. I'm just sharing the way we've decided to do it, which I think the reason I'm recommending it is because it eliminates another barrier to businesses participating and complying.
Evan, will you do us a favor and just go into what bundling the rates means and give us an example?
Please.
Thank you.
Counselor Reisner? Sure. Okay. Do you want...
I can. So Milwaukee's about the same about city, about the same size. So instead of having a business decide, well, I want trash service at this cost, and then I want recycling service at this cost, the goal is to provide everybody with the opportunity for all the services, for solid waste, the trash, trash, recycling, and food, a food bin, and having that as one rate, not as a pick-and-choose item. So that way, it encourages, it's not a barrier to people saying, well, I would like to recycle my food and do the good thing for the planet, but I can't pay the extra $2 a month for the food container. So this just makes it one rate for solid waste services instead of a menu pick-and-choose item. Kind of, I believe, the residential customers do that now in Gladstone. They pay for weekly trash service.
Right.
Which includes their trash, their recycling, their glass, their paper. It's all included under one rate.
Mm-hmm.
So if you don't want to recycle at your home, you don't have to.
But you're still paying for it.
Right. It'd be nice to save the planet, and you have the opportunity to do that, but you're not charged extra if you want to. That way, it makes it fair for all residents. This makes it fair for all commercial providers.
Sure.
It's given a one solid bundled rate.
The alternative is to have an additional fee.
Right.
And so what you would be telling businesses is you must participate in this program, and you will be paying more as a result.
Right. Okay.
It'll remind people that don't have to participate to participate if it's already included.
Gotcha.
You stated...
Disagree, but I gotcha.
You stated that you... That Metro has done a reach-out to businesses, and you've gotten feedback. But I've talked to a few businesses, and they're smaller, they're not like a grocery store, but they've heard nothing about this.
Right.
This is new to them.
I'm sure there will be businesses that say that they either didn't notice or didn't receive a postcard from Metro. That's always going to happen. I'm not sure what to say except that I'm not surprised. If they're small enough in terms of what they generate in food waste, they won't be covered by this policy.
Okay.
If they generate less than 250 pounds of food waste a week, they just wouldn't be covered.
Is there going to be additional assistance available to help us educate it once the council does through the ordinance? And I think that's what we really need here.
Yes.
Is help people understanding what it is, even though we've reached out to them repetition for that?
Gladstone has an agreement with the county currently for technical assistance. So they already provide that service for Gladstone, and this will continue. It's not anything new or additional. I believe they currently do assist businesses in Gladstone. That's why there are some already participating because of the outreach the county is doing, and that will continue even after this ordinance is adopted.
Yeah.
Part of their agreement with you.
It's one of those where the council's hands are tied because they're mandated to approve the ordinance.
Have to.
Well, I... Thank you for bringing that up. So I've read through the charter. And so where in the charter or state law, ORS's say that you can mandate that we do this?
I'm going to refer that to you.
Well, I'm not Metro, so I can't answer that question.
You don't, I guess, is the question that we...
And I'm glad you asked that.
We will need to explore that.
But I wanted to.
And that's why we're doing the presentation tonight, is to understand what if Gladstone says no. We have all these compression issues with outside agencies imposing these fees on our citizens. What if we say no? And those are the things that we need to talk about.
Well, and I apologize. I didn't research that. I just, we were in Metro's jurisdiction. They mandated it, so I brought it to council. But we do need to look at that, I guess.
This is going to be a conversation that goes on over the next few years. So you may get this not just from this city council, but from others.
Mm-hmm.
Right? We're constrained.
Right.
But on the other hand, some of the things that I'm seeing here is you have cross-subsidization to backstop the cost for the distance haul. Right?
Right, by Metro.
So this, to me, means that somebody's thinking, at least about the additional costs, Counselor Reisner. They are thinking about some of the additional costs, apparently. I didn't realize this was part of this policy rollout. But they are trying to mitigate costs, correct? So as you go forward with this policy, I'm assuming we're going to fine-tune this, further mitigating the costs, realizing cost savings, potentially even to some of the businesses that are able to, as you said, Evan, pay more attention to what they've got in their waste stream. Some of this food may not even go into the waste stream. They may not even need this service because they can, you know, basically donate the food, or they're paying more attention to the inventory. But you do have cost mitigation in this.
Right. No, I see that.
I mean, but I also think the conversation that we just started will be going on for a few more years. And as Metro and others roll these things out to us, the city councils are the folks that have to look our citizens in the eye and say, we still need to fix our sewers and our water systems.
Right.
But money's being picked off everywhere.
Right. And you're asking our businesses to pay more, you know, to put food waste. And don't get me wrong, I grew up on a farm. We had a slot bucket for the pigs. But we don't in our house now. And I understand this is different. We're talking commercial. But Portland's pushed it to residential also. But to follow up on what you were saying about in regards to the distance payment collect... How long? It doesn't, you know, is it five years, 10 years, 20 years? And the same with the funding for implementation? What's the plan there?
So the funding for additional FTEs that would help provide technical assistance to businesses goes through the five-year implementation pathway. The funding assistance to collection companies that would be driving a longer distance, potentially for transfer, would, I believe, continue until the time that they have a close-by option.
Okay. So as you were going through your presentation, something in the back of my mind that probably most of people here in this room don't remember, but Rydell, back in 1990, '91... Commissioner Tracy, thank you. Tried to do something like this. Am I wrong?
It's very different now.
Is it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because that was disaster.
But that's... But we learned from that mistake, and I think that anybody who's in the business learned from that mistake. It's very different now. So what we haven't gone... What we haven't touched on is what happens to this material, Evan.
Right.
And I think that's going to be an important thing to continue to educate our folks on. But yeah, it is very different, though, Counselor Reisner.
And I understand, you know, about the 5,000 trucks or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm thinking, okay, there's, you know, two ways to look at this. One, there's a lot of trucks hauling food waste up the gorge, which environmentalists are going, eh, we don't want that. But then I'm also seeing dollar signs for truckers and, you know, people with jobs, family made jobs up on that end in this. So it's a give or take. Let's see, what else has been talked about? Oh, you mentioned about, like, shoot, 25% by next year in one of these... Oh, you mentioned about, like, shoot, 25% by next year in one of these slides.
What's that?
The goal, right, statewide.
Oh, yeah, statewide reduction, yes.
Right, so what is it now?
Oh, it's in the-
I mean, that's next year.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think we're gonna get to 25% by 2020. I don't know what it is now, but I can't, I don't think it's even half of what the goal is at the moment.
Okay, and also, something I'd take issue with, is on the last bullet point on that one, was mandate may open doors to donating and reducing food waste. It might not, and then we're, you know, again, we've got businesses that are, in this, in, well, the, oh, restaurant and also like Safeway, I mean, they're running on three, three and a half percent margins.
Right.
And you're, you know, and Metro, I'm gonna say you, you're sitting in Metro's seat, so, sorry, you're taking the heat.
Thanks for having me.
Is asking, and, you might next time ask Metro to do this, but, sorry, I don't mean to be mean.
That's okay.
But, you know, we're asking businesses in Gladstone to fork out more money when they're, you know, barely make it as it is.
I think the intent was to, by having them separate the food that is going into the solid waste stream, to show the businesses how much food they are actually disposing of to help increase their profit margin, to say, you shouldn't really be wasting all this food, if it does have to be wasted, maybe it could be donated and edible food should be edible, and they might be able to increase their profit margins above that three percent by showing them the waste they're actually producing. I think that's the goal.
And if, and if you guys had done that a year and a half ago when this started, you know, they started talking, saying, hey, let's sit down with, instead of shoving the, you know, Metro shoving this ordinance down our throats, and we have to make this decision next month, then maybe they would be coming saying, hey, this is a great idea, please support it, versus as Counselor Neeson, I've talked to several too, that haven't a clue as to, I mean, they might've got a postcard.
Sure.
Or something, but several of them didn't have a clue. I'm not saying that they hadn't been notified, I don't know about that, but they're saying they weren't.
Those are the smaller ones that may not be affected?
But still.
Well, even in your larger restaurants, they're gonna be affected and they're gonna start watching their, believe me, they will start watching their food cost and they will cut back big time.
Absolutely.
So you're, you're gonna end up losing out in the long run.
Well, that's okay, if we reduce the amount of total food that's wasted, that's the ultimate, that's fine, that's the, that's a good outcome. If a restaurant says, oh boy, as a result of separating their food waste, they realize they have opportunities, that they're buying more food than they need to, and it's going to the garbage, and they say, yeah, we can, without any harm to our customers, we can cut our food waste by 50% and save ourselves money, that's great.
Well, I've been in the restaurant business for a number of years, and 32% is the food cost that they run, and they stay, and they try to stay very, very strict to that.
I think one of the things that's missing here is if we were to do a cost comparison with avoided costs, if you, let's say you run a restaurant, you have a two cubic yard dumpster, you're starting to segregate your food now, you're starting to realize that you're, you're paying more attention to what's going in the dumpster, and now you're able to go down to a 1.5 cubic yards, you're paying for that service level. I think what you, what we need to do is make sure that the city councilors are understanding there could be a potential cost savings for that business, because what you've just done, and what we've done here, is we've walked up and said, here's a new service, we're gonna add it into, and we're gonna bundle the rate, and it's gonna be cross subsidized, for lack of a better term, for the most part, amongst these businesses, and everybody's gonna incur a bigger cost, and that's not necessarily true, is it?
It's not necessarily true.
True, right?
We have a number of cases.
So if a business operator and a generator were paying attention to the amounts and the levels that were coming in, and they could actually reduce their service level but still segregate the food, they might actually realize a cost savings.
Yeah, there, and there are-
Is that fair, or is, am I off on that?
And there are, there are, I can think of a few, just right off the top of my head, of, you know, savvy food-related businesses that have done just that, as we've helped them. The most striking one, which of course doesn't really compare to a small local business, but Costco's saving thousands of dollars a year, the Costco that's over by the town center, after starting participating in food scraps collection.
See, and that's the kind of story that we really need to get out here and tell, because what ended up happening here is, we immediately start seeing costs go up.
We can't, we can't promise that, because that's on the business owner to realize those opportunities for savings.
But Costco has the personnel to be able to do that. Your mom and pop, you know, grocery store, or restaurant, they really don't.
You're right.
So another local case study, that, where business, smaller businesses done that, is with the bomber on McLaughlin Boulevard. They've been very happy since starting participating in the, in food scraps collection because they've identified ways to cut back, for example, on portions, they noticed customers were consistently not eating a certain amount of a portion that was supplied to them. They realized they could provide a little bit less and save themselves some money and reduce their waste. So we have anecdotes, I should say, is the key, anecdotes of savings.
And let's not pick on them, but did they reduce the cost for that plate portion serving that they were doing?
I don't know.
And the reality is, but that's them paying attention to good business.
No, they did not.
That's not on us, we can't fault them for-
Right, absolutely, right?
They charge the same for that plate of slightly less food.
Or money.
That's their prerogative.
What I've heard too is part of the technical assistance, what I've heard from other businesses is that when the county does go out and assist people with the food scraps, they're gonna throw away, even if they don't reduce what the amount of material they throw away, the size of their garbage versus their food scraps, when you pull those food scraps out, the size of the garbage container goes down. So if they used to have a five yard container at a certain cost, and they go down to a one yard container, that's their cost savings as well, and everybody takes out their trash. You know when your trash is full. I mean, in my house, I know when it's trash day, the trash can is full. If I could go down to a smaller one and reduce my cost there, I would, and I think a lot of businesses do that as well, and that's part of the technical assistance that the county provides, is advising them that if you're pulling out all these food scraps, you reduce from the bottom of your trash, you can reduce the container and reduce your cost on that side.
Yeah, we can't promise businesses they'll save money, but we can promise you that that's what we help businesses do whenever there are opportunities to do that, from the technical, you know, assistance standpoint.
All right, I think we're probably good on food scrap policies.
Thank you so, thank you so much.
And before you-
For answering what you could.
Before you adopt anything, we'll look into what happens if you don't adopt it.
Yeah, I think that's smart.
Smart question to ask.
And that is clarified in the administrative rules.
What happens if we say no?
Thank you.
I mean, I'll have to look at those, I don't have them, but I don't know if there's a fine imposed for the city, or-
We'll all be getting tickets.
I have those rules and I can send them for them to you, if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item is the consent agenda, do we have any discussion?
I'd like to pull number eight.
Okay.
If there's no others, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items one through seven.
Would someone like to second that?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner to approve consent agenda items one through seven, seconded by Counselor Ripley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda items one through seven passed, all right, number eight.
So, question I have in regards to this, I appreciate and agree with changing, you know, or, the, you know, adding water sewers, stone water, that kind of thing. My question is, we're also increasing administrative funds, funding from 1.7% to 2%. And, so, I have two questions. One is about how much money is that, are we talking? And two, why do we need to increase it 0.3%?
Because the 1.7 wasn't quite covering it, and this is, this is hearing from the finance department, it's taken a lot more time than they anticipated. Not a lot more time, but we figured 2%, another 0.3% would cover that cost of collecting, sending out the, sending out the bills and collecting.
So about how much money are we talking then?
It depends on how much we bring in, so-
How much have we been bringing in?
Okay, so let's say, our last biennium budget, we estimated about 400,000, so that would be $8,000.
Okay, so we need, okay, so we're needing-
I mean, at the 2%, so the 1.7 would be something less than that.
It's a little bit, so, okay.
So not much.
So no, it's not very much at all, it's, it is pretty low.
Sure, okay.
All right, any further discussion on item number eight?
If not, I move that we approve item number eight, resolution 1158.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor Todd. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda item eight passed. Are there any correspondence?
I have nothing.
All right, so next is the regular agenda. So as usual, before we start, I'd like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we're representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been so many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. I want you to know we appreciate your time being here, and I would like all of you to respect the desire of others to hear what we're talking about, so if you could keep your side discussions to a minimum, that would be appreciated. And also, I wanna make sure that our phones are all turned off. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging, and I hope you all can help us do that. Thank you. So first item is number nine, the community festival application.
Did you want to do 9A?
Um, yeah, we could do that first, 9A, I was gonna do 9, then 9A, but let's do 9A first.
Do 9 first, that's fine.
Nope, let's go ahead, 9A.
9A, let's do it.
Let's do 9A, which is the appointment of John Schmerber as the Gladstone Police Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and because I gave you the staff report this evening, I'm going to go ahead for process and talk through what is in the staff report. Appointment of John Schmerber as the Gladstone Police Chief. So back in February 25th of 2019, the city did an extensive interview process on four candidates for the position of Gladstone Police Chief were interviewed. Council executive session was held on March 4th, and two candidates were selected for an executive session interview with the council on March 12th. Out of that executive session, the council consensus was to move John Schmerber through the employment process, and Nancy and I have kept you updated on that process. So a formal background investigation was conducted by Steve Swenson. It was completed on Mr. Schmerber. In his report, he stated, "Without reservation, I have full confidence that John will make an exceptionally well-qualified chief for Gladstone PD. You made a very good choice and will reap benefits of the substantial investment that Hillsborough put into him for the past 20 years." We also had Mr. Schmerber go through a full psychological exam, which was performed by Dr. David Corey on April 3rd. Dr. Corey also recommended Mr. Schmerber, without any reservation, to be the Gladstone Police Chief. And then the final element of the employment process was a criminal and credit history check, which was performed by the Local Government Personnel Institute. The results were received yesterday and indicated no issues in either regard. Since Mr. Schmerber is an active law enforcement agent in good standing with the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training, there's no medical examination required." So this is all very good news. I also put a section in the staff report, and I'll cite Gladstone Municipal Code 212030. Under the city administrator duties, I can sit on a hiring committee with certain department heads with the mayor and the city council, and make recommendations to the mayor and city council as to the appointment of such positions, which include the police chief. So now we are at the final stage where publicly I'm asking the council to appoint John Schmerber to be the Gladstone Police Chief. And I also included a copy of his resume, and John would be here tonight, but he is in Bend at the OACP Police Chiefs Conference, which is where our interim police chief just left to go to after our groundbreaking. And he has accepted the position with the council's concurrence, and tentatively, we would start him on mid-May.
Okay. Any questions? Would someone like to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion that we accept this appointment.
I second.
Motion was made by Counselor Neese, seconded by Counselor Mercero. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a new police chief.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is the community festival application. Thank you, Bob.
That must be you. Hey, oh, I'm speaking on it, it's okay. Good evening, everyone, Bob Everett, Gladstone, and Home and Business. So I'm here tonight representing both the Gladstone Oak Lodge Rotary Club and also the Gladstone Community Festival. And of course, in years past, we put on the festival, and it's a three-day hoop-dee-law, I'd call it, and at the end of it, I'm pretty well tired out, but it's a lot of fun, at least I find it a lot of fun, and I hope everyone else has. We really don't have really any changes, too much going on. We are planning to have a pickleball tournament, a three-day pickleball tournament, and that's being organized, both Friday, for Friday, Saturday and Sunday. I just talked to Candy, and it looks like the Beer Garden will still be going also, and we're planning some different entertainment, different activities, so, sort of the same events, but yet different, we always try to change things up a little bit, for the course, to just give people sort of added activities and other things that we would like to do. As I've said in the past, I've always appreciated the city's support, everything they do for us. Since I've been working on this, I have had nothing but utmost cooperation from everyone that's involved. Jim and Public Works have been, I mean, they've been so courteous to us and so wonderful. It's terrific working with them and the police department, and we really value their participation. I mean, it really makes it, and, and of course, the cities in general. Jackie's been more than, always has been courteous, and, so, I, that's really all I have to say. If anybody has any questions, I can hopefully answer them. If I can't, then I'll certainly find the answer, but I think I have a pretty good handle on what's going on, so.
Any questions?
Come on, grill me.
Off the parade, I wanna know all of off the parade, I hear it's wonderful.
Well, I think there are two wonderful women that are handling that, so that's for sure. They've done a fantastic job, so.
So I have a question, probably more for Jackie, that there's a dollar figure in the cost impact, and I see that it is in-kind resources, I know everybody helps out. If there's an actual monetary cost, is that something that can come out of, you know, our economic development, or one of our-
Yeah, I think, I think a couple of years ago, just, just so we had an idea of what the in-kind services were that we put in there, but if there was something specific that the city wanted to do in addition to that, I'm sure that we could take that out of our community promotions, business development line item, if it's within reason to do that.
Yeah, I was just wondering, an easy way to put it someplace so that it isn't an issue every year?
It depends on how much you want and what you want it for, and that's really up to the council to do that.
Okay.
And of course, we would welcome anything additional that the city would want to do. You know, let us know, we'll certainly fit it in, I mean, that's for sure, that's always gonna happen.
What have we done in the past?
Well, literally, it's been basically just having people, you know, having the tables, having people staffing them, the different departments there, a little bit of information about what's going on, things like that. Of course, this year, you know, it'd be the, you know, the new public buildings down below, and two, and also, I don't know how far the library, the vents on the library would necessarily be, but, you know, if there's something that the city would like to do, or whatever, you know, we'd be more than happy. Talked to Jim, and they're, he's, he's gonna, they're gonna bring up the back and help clean up afterwards, too, so that'll be exciting. I mean, that was one, actually, it was interesting, because that was one of the requests that we had from one of the Rotary- we had from one of the Rotary members, is if, because they were concerned about traffic, because there were cars even before, they were picking up afterwards, and there were cars that were coming through, and they couldn't pick up. So, you know, it would be nice to, they'll go through the street cleaners afterwards and clean up, you know, whatever, all the candy that's on the ground then too. So I think they save it later at Public Works, but you know.
Probably.
Well, we could do like Portland, where they follow up the water trucks in a sweeper.
Yeah, there you go. Spray them all, everybody, yeah.
Yep.
Cool them down, it's always a hot weekend.
That's true.
Well, I think that maybe a good gesture would be if Bob talked to his committee about if you are needing some additional assistance, that the city would be interested in helping, and then we can vet that to see, so you're not put on the spot tonight, but if there's an area that's lacking, then we can help with that.
I'll certainly bring it up. I don't think that, in years past, that that has been an issue at all. In fact, one of the things, as I mentioned right from the very beginning, was that I didn't really want to step away, step out from what, all that you provide, because it is so much, and it's so valuable, that I really didn't want to come in here and start asking for a lot of other sort of things. I mean, I've done that intentionally, because I just thought there was, that that's really our, our sort of parameters within ourselves, and you guys just do everything. I mean, do, if it wasn't, really, if it wasn't for the city, we could, there's no way we'd hold this thing, and there's just no way. And that's the bottom line.
This is so important to the community, and I just want you to know that we want to be partners with you guys and support this.
And I value that very much, and I feel that we have been. I mean, every one of you I've talked to, and, you know, in some ways, participate, and that's, wow, that's been so valuable, you know, in the years.
Throwing out the challenge for Chili Cook-Off this year, guys.
Yes, yeah. That's what we need, we need Chili Cook-Offers. Yes, very much.
We're going to start advertising it.
I see some, you know, hot stuff there, so that's for sure, so.
Yep.
We need the Fire Department back again.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Where are they? Yeah, okay.
Hear that, Jeff?
Not sure Jeff will be here.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, we'll pass that on. Make sure that's in the rolls.
Alright, so I guess we need a motion to approve the community festival application.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Gladstone Community Application.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilor Neese, seconded by Councilor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Community Festival application has been approved.
Thank you very much, we do appreciate it.
And do get back to us if there's something we can do.
Oh, I will, don't worry, we'll talk.
Okay. Next is ordinance number 10, ordinance 1496, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, GMC Chapter 9.60, camping prohibited in certain places, Section 9.60.030, violation penalty to a Class B violation. And this is the second reading.
Yes, and your staff report is very simple. At the March 12th meeting, it was approved, however, there was a dissenting vote, which requires a second reading, and so we're asking for that to take place tonight.
So usually, I have the attorney or Jackie read the little script for that.
So this is an ordinance number 1496, an ordinance amending Chapter 9.60 of the Gladstone Municipal Code.
Mm-hmm, and that's it. So do we need to do a roll call vote for the second reading?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion, amend Gladstone Municipal Code, Section 9.60.030, penalty section, changing violations of Chapter 9.60 to a Class B violation.
Do I have a second? Hold on a second. Motion was made by Councilor Tracy, seconded by Councilor Todd. Any further discussion? Alright, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilor Ripley?
Yes.
Councilor Neese?
Yes.
Councilor Tracy?
Yes.
Councilor Reisner?
Yes.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
Councilor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes.
Ordinance 1496 has passed. Next is item number 11, Resolution 1156, update on public contracting rules. Staff?
Thank you, and I'm gonna have our city attorney do this item, which staff is very pleased that this is coming before you tonight. Chad?
Mayor, members of the council, for the record, Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. You have before you both a staff report and a memo from our office that goes into detail about the proposed changes, and I'll just highlight those and answer any questions that you might have. In short, the state law permits the city to enact its own public contracting code, which the city has done. What these proposals do is updates the code in a couple of significant ways. The first is that it really focuses on something called QBS, and that's the most significant thing we're doing, and that's called quality-based selection. And that's a process that the state enacted to require us to use a certain process to hire certain professionals, such as engineers and architects, in contracting, in construction types of contracts. And so, we have, and what we've been doing is just following the model code that the state has, and we found, in our experience working with other cities, that there's a cleaner and more direct process that we can use than following the state model code to implement the QBS. And so, that's the most significant change, and most of the changes that you see within here, implement the QBS at the local level, using our own code as opposed to following the state's model code. The second area is that we are looking at the cost of services, and the city has not updated its model code, or its contracting rules since 2005, and so since that time, costs have increased, costs of doing business have basically just increased. So the city is, staff and our office are proposing for personal services contracts, changing the process in which we award contracts for personal services to increase the dollar value from $25,000 to $50,000 for when you have to basically do a formal bidding process. Under the, under state law, there's basically three ways in which you can award a contract, a direct award, an intermediate process, and the formal process. For this, the proposed amendment would, currently, you have $25,000 and above, you have to use the formal process. This would increase that to $50,000. The last aspect that we were looking at is the personal services contract, and same sort of idea in changing the dollar threshold for personal services contracts, and the state actually amended that several years ago, and this just conforms to state law. The one important thing that's mentioned in the memo that I do want to point out is that this is really just about the process the city uses for awarding contracts, it doesn't change the authority for who actually signs off on the contract. And so, that is all at the very end of our memo, in saying, at what dollar threshold something has to come to the council, versus something coming to the city administrator, versus something going to directors, versus managers. And so, that process stays the same. All this is really doing is changing the procedures we use to actually select the person that we're gonna contract with.
Alright, questions?
No, you answered the one or two questions I had in regards to the dollar.
About that.
Dollar amounts, but just, I missed you. But I'm not comfortable with raising the amounts. We've had over the last several years, or few years, where staff has signed contracts or, you know, and with different dollar amounts that are under this. So I think anything above this, what currently have, should come to city council.
So again, this is not changing anything about what comes to the city council versus what staff can do on their own. That all stays exactly the same. What it changes is the process we use to actually select the contractor.
Right. No, the wording I'm okay with. It's the dollar amount.
Yeah, the dollar amounts, it's just the dollar amounts affect what process you use, whether you can use a direct award, an intermediate process, where you have to select three individuals, or a formal process, where you basically can take formal bids.
Well, I keep seeing where money, where it's, in this proposal, it's doubled.
Yeah, so that those dollar thresholds, right now, what we do is we use the dollar thresholds to say, which of those three processes you must use.
Right.
And so, what we're doing is we're raising those dollar thresholds to say when you have to use the formal process, versus the informal process, versus the direct award.
Right.
Who actually gets to sign off on that and say, yes, we agree to this contract, isn't changing. And so, if you look at the last page, it's on 11-4 of your packet.
Right.
The last page where we say, there's a little chart that says authorization required, that's what it currently says about when it's gotta come to the council versus when staff can sign off on it, and that's not changing. Those dollar figures are not changing.
So it's the same as it is right now?
Right.
I think one thing about the dollar amounts is, if you look at the cost of labor in construction, in the last 20 years, it's gone up 300%. So...
No, I understand.
But that going up, doubling really isn't as much, it's actually going down in the big picture with the cost of, of labor and supplies and everything else going up so high, so fast.
A lot of it is just saving staff time and, you know, city dollars, basically, and not having to do a formal process when the dollar threshold is so low.
But we've been, I think, wronged in the past, in the last few years, under the threshold that we have now. So now you're saying that we can raise that. I have concerns, I guess is the bottom line.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you're 100% clear that the approval authority isn't changing. What has to come to council versus doesn't. It's just what process is being used.
Right.
And so, whether or not you have to, you know, send out solicitations, and take formal bids, and doing all that, that's what we're talking about.
So to clarify, the city administrator has the authority now to spend up to $50,000, correct?
Yeah.
That authority is in place now.
Correct.
The difference is that at the $25,000 threshold mark, she, the city administrator has to go into a formalized process for the additional $25,000. So if it's a $35,000 need, she would have to go through the formal process to get to that $35,000 contract, correct?
Correct.
Still has $15,000 in the threshold, correct?
Correct.
To her spending authority, correct?
Yeah.
So basically, what I hear Councilor Reisner saying is, he, and correct me if I'm wrong, he'd like to see the formal process, he feels like, I think, he feels like the formal process above the $25,000, he still likes to keep that in place, so that anything above $25,000 still is something that we're reviewing, correct?
Right. No, we wouldn't review it.
But we wouldn't, but...
Right, but there's still a process.
Right, but we're still gonna adhere to that process, because the city administrator wouldn't be spending the money without at least letting the council know that there's expenditure there.
Correct. You still have the current authority you do now. It's what Councilor Ripley said, the cost of business has gone up, so I can only spend $5,000, and then I've gotta do a process. And in some, it's impossible for Public Works Director and I to get some of our work done, trying to go through a process to get informal bids from three people that won't respond, and so this raises that threshold to where we're still doing a process, but it allows us to have a higher threshold, but the council still ultimately approves the same authority that you have.
And I didn't articulate it very well, it's not the, at that point, or at the point now, we're in a formalized procurement process over $25,000 regarding, regardless of your spending authority, correct? So this is just basically raising that bar another 25.
Right.
I tried, it's a weird thing.
No, 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 I understand.
And it really just comes down to Councilor Reisner has a concern, but it's ultimately up to the council on what you want to do on that policy.
Yeah.
I hear it, it's, you know, you're watching the books.
The reality, and you could argue this both ways, but it's actually giving you more
control now with the dollar limit raised, because you have to go through only a few, there's only a few qualified vendors to in fact do a job if it's so much money. Now you can do what you're talking about doing through Public Works or wherever to try to control the costs.
Ultimately, we have a lot of projects that we're trying to go, and this current process with the dollar threshold it's at, it is really difficult for us to get the bids that we need to keep things moving. So if you keep with the current process, we're just gonna keep slugging away. This allows us a little bit more flexibility, but it doesn't change the council's authority that's already in place. And it's a trust issue, and that's fine, but we feel like this is gonna give some more internal release, so that we can streamline some projects to keep moving forward.
Yeah, there's a lot of projects that fall in this price range, a lot, just about everything Public Works touches.
The other thing I want to point out is that there's two different dollar thresholds that are being changed. One is for personal services contracts, the other is for goods and services that are defined by state law. And so, the change, which is the last change that's discussed in the memo, and that last change is just being done to make local law consistent with state law. State law permits the direct award of contracts at that new dollar threshold, which I believe is $10,000. And so, this is just changing that to be consistent with state law. There's, you know, there's no sort of big other policy issue that, you know, staff is proposing to be different. The big difference is that under state law, local jurisdictions are given great latitude as to how they're gonna award personal services contracts, as opposed to a goods contract. And so, if you think about, you know, we're buying widgets, we're following state law, under state law, you're allowed to do a direct award at a higher threshold than what we allow in our local code. And so, that change is doing that for widgets. For the personal services that aren't related to QBS, just to make it more confusing for you, but for personal services contracts, that's the dollar threshold that I think is really in debate before you tonight.
Alright. Would someone like to make a motion?
Thank you.
Or have more questions? Would someone like to make a motion? I'm gonna ask again.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, Steph. Maybe we approve Resolution 1156, a resolution adopting updated public contracting rules and repealing Resolution 902.
I'll second it. Motion was made by Councilor Tracy, seconded by Councilor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Next is item number 12, report from the Gladstone School District Board, Kristen Eaton.
So I've been taking notes on my phone, I haven't been texting people. We have a lot going on in the schools, as you can imagine. Last month, we had Everybody Reads Day at John Wetton Elementary, and we had professionals and celebrities, local celebrities, come and read with kids, and that's always a, a much enjoyed event at the school.
And everybody should do it, it's a blast.
It is a blast. Gladstone schools are continuing to experience declining resident enrollment, and this year, the open enrollment statutes that the state had put into place that had kind of shored up our enrollment for Gladstone schools is sunsetting, but we have a large number of transfer requests for incoming kindergarten kids, for administrative transfers. It doesn't quite rise to the level that open enrollment did, but it's within a dozen kids. So that is kind of surprising. What we're really keeping an eye on right now is the state legislature's budget. For the first time since I've been on school board 12 years, we have a governor's budget that came in only slightly short of what we needed for a hold harmless budget for the state, meaning keep us at our continuing levels, instead of cutting. Every governor's budget over the past 12 years has come in substantially lower, and then there's been work with the state legislators to improve upon what the governor did. This time, the governor came in with a projected budget in December, and it was, it was a little higher than what we anticipated. Still didn't get us to our quality education model that is, that is what we would need to do to accomplish the goals that the government has set for us. But it was, it was higher than what we anticipated. The joint chairs then for the legislature came back and suggested a much lower budget than the governor. That's the first time in 12 years I've seen that happen. The joint chairs have, each of the previous 11 years, improved on what the governor's budget had been. So that has caused the Oregon State School Board Association, the Oregon Confederation of School Administrators, and the Oregon Teachers Union to all start actively lobbying our legislature to try to come up with more money for our students, and it's looking favorable right now, but we don't know for sure. We just on Saturday had our Gladstone Education Foundation Dinner and Auction, and I know some of you were in attendance, and thank you for those of you who were there. Our focus item there was the dental clinic that's going into the Gladstone... the Gladstone Center for Children and Families. We have gotten a, a sizable grant from our healthcare arena, I believe it's Care Oregon, to put in, uh, three dental chairs to serve, um, two, two children and one adult. And, and hopefully, it'll serve a lot of people, but at any one time, there's one adult chair and, and two child chairs going in. We have found that there is a strong correlation between dental care and health and ability for students to learn. Early, uh, on when we opened the Gladstone Center for Children and Families, and we're doing the, um, kind of the, bridging the gap between different services, preventing kids from falling through the cracks, if you will. We had a, a young student, um, who I believe was a preschooler, that was complaining that he wasn't feeling good. And it was a generalized complaint, wasn't able to focus in the class, and, uh, our partners were all able to pool together the resources that they had to, um, to offer and grant, uh, the student transportation to a dentist. A single-parent household, the mother, um, didn't have transportation either. They were able to get transportation for the mother, and they found that the child wasn't able to focus in class because he had a horribly abscessed tooth that was on the verge of going septic. Um, it could have been a life-threatening situation, let alone the difficulty with learning. And because we had all the partners there, they were able to do that. We're now going to be in a situation where we can do that in-house, in the Gladstone Center for Children and Families. This is not a private dental clinic where, you know, it's going to be insurance-based. This is more like Medicaid-type, um, dental coverage. So we're very excited to be getting that coming in. Um, there's been a lot of focus this year on the social and emotional health of students. Um, we're seeing across the country as, um, as mental health services are declining, that, um, behaviors in the classroom are escalating, and we're having classroom clearing behaviors where, um, teachers are having to clear all of the students out of their classroom because there is a student having a meltdown. And it's, it's nationwide that this is happening. Gladstone is becoming a state and national leader in building resilience in, in students with high ACEs scores. That's Adverse Childhood Experiences. These, these are the kids who are having the problems with dysregulation of, of their self-control as a result of social and emotional traumas. We're having a lot of, um, outside school districts, out of the state and in the state, coming to visit particularly John Wetton, uh, because of some of their innovations there. And it was just part of a television segment on KPDB a few weeks ago. Um, we have our, our annual Budget Committee meeting coming up May first. Uh, we always schedule two. There's a second on May fifteenth. If we don't get it resolved in twelve years, we've always done it in one meeting. So I'm hoping that we can do that again this year. Uh, but before then, we have a joint meeting with all of you on April twenty-fourth, and we are all really looking forward to that.
Any questions for Kristen? So one thing, the Education Foundation, the only thing I won was, um, I get Bob Stewart's job for a day. So if anybody has anything you need me to do, I don't know how much power that's going to give me, but I already got hit up for some raises for some teachers.
Did you? Well, we just negotiated the contract. They're, they are competitive now. They, they were not so competitive before, and, and we have tried to make sure that they're competitive so that we can compete and keep our good teachers here, so.
And that's a, a message that you're hearing across the board, and.
It is.
Yeah, not just teachers, all of them. All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks for the update.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Next is Business Carried Forward. So we have three items, um, public records requests for attorney bills. So in your, in your packet is a copy of the public records request that you received, and also, um, I believe it was David. No, it was actually Tammy Bannick that sent a, a response to that that I forwarded to the city council. So really, we just wanted to let you know that we received the public records request. We acknowledged that with him. But we also provided him a copy of the memo, um, that was prepared when this was last discussed in September of twenty-eighteen. That's when the city council collectively decided to release those invoices, keep them in a binder in the city recorder's office. And so you guys have that ability to access that now, um, and I'll, can let Chad clarify, but if there's something further that Mr. Buchel is looking for, we've asked him to clarify that in his request.
Yes, so just by way of background, and you guys may be familiar with this, so stop me if you don't want to hear all this, but the, um, the bills from our office are deemed attorney-client privileged information. They are available to the city council as a body, and as you all know, the city council acts as a body. Individual city councilors don't have authority to act on their own unless the council gives a, an individual councilor that authority. So historically, there was a policy that was passed at some point, um, that basically said that, that even though the council's a body can review that if they want to review it as a body, we're not going to have individual councilors, uh, go into City Hall and take up staff time and potentially waive the attorney-client privilege by releasing the bills, by giving access to the bills to individual councilors on an ad hoc basis. In two thousand eighteen, as Tammy just explained, we changed that policy a little bit to basically create a system where individual councilors can go in, and we keep everything in a binder, and you can go in and just look at the binder, because that really resolves two things. One, it precludes an individual counselor from taking those bills and releasing them publicly, and thereby waiving the privilege on behalf of the city. And two, since it's already just in a binder, it's easier for staff to be able to provide that without taking up too much staff time. So I think the question before the council now is, this request is looking for bills from a period between December of two thousand sixteen and June of two thousand eighteen that, um, are not covered by the existing policy, because the existing, existing policy was going from September two thousand eighteen forward. And so if you want to allow individual access to the bills from December two thousand sixteen to June two thousand eighteen, we could certainly do that. You could put those in the binder, and you could just basically amend the policy to do that. But that's completely a policy call for the council to make, because again, the council acts as a body in saying what individual councilors can and can't do. And so, you know, our office has no opinion on that. We're absolutely fine with you guys, you know, having that, you know, with these protections in place, having that be done. Again, it's just completely a policy call for you guys to make. And it's our understanding that if that's what occurs, they'll withdraw this public records request. We would continue to maintain, if the public records request moves forward, that the bills are privileged. We would redact the privileged information or otherwise release the bills as is required by state law. And, you know, we would go through the entire public records process of providing a cost estimate and collecting fees to do all that. But I think the, the goal here, at least reading between the lines, is to somehow permit individual councilors the ability to look at these bills from December two thousand sixteen to June of two thousand eighteen.
We don't really need to do anything then, or we do?
If you want to change the policy, um, to permit individual councilors to look at the bills from December two thousand sixteen to June two thousand eighteen, you could do that. You could wait until we get more information from the requister. It's really up to you. As I said, I'm sort of reading between the lines here, but I believe if you say to the requister, yes, we're allowing individual councilors to access the bills, that they will withdraw the request.
Because it, it sounds like they're asking for them, but then they're also asking, I don't understand.
Yeah, that's why we ask for clarification.
Okay.
And there's, there's going to be time and energy that's going to have to be put into it by Tammy to, you know, put it into the binder and all of that. So I don't know if we want to jump forward until it's clarified what, what they want.
Yeah, because it's kind of contradicting.
It seemed like it to me, too.
Yeah.
And that's only a few minutes, but, so if I could, a clarifying question as asked in the past is, who, who's determined that these are, uh, client?
Attorney-client privileged?
Yeah.
So state courts. If you look at the memo that, um, that, uh, our office prepared back in two thousand eighteen.
Right.
So you can see the case file in there that basically says that the, uh, the bills from an attorney to a client are privileged information, because it talks about what the client's concerned about, what the client is asking the attorney to work on, the type of advice the client's giving.
Okay.
Didn't we have discussions on this before?
We did. Yeah, we did. And I disagree with, with the attorney.
And I thought we had kind of come to an agreement, you know, that, that's why we put the notebook in place and had everything in there, and that we were going to move forward and not revert backwards.
I mean, will it continue on? Will we get another one that says, well, now, from December two thousand ten? I mean, it's like, I'm trying to understand what the, there's obviously some sort of history that I'm not aware of, is what I'm saying.
Well, this was, this was news to me. I didn't, I wasn't behind this, just for, for the record. I had, I was not behind that request.
Well, and you don't have to do anything tonight. We do want you to know that we've asked him for clarity. And at that time, if he provides more, we may need to get some direction on whether or not you want to change your current policy.
I, I'm lost here. I mean, I think, to be honest, if this is the, if these are date certains, um, December twenty sixteen to June twenty eighteen, and we're talking about monthly statements, are we not?
Yeah.
We talked about putting the book together. I mean, Council Neese made a good point. We were, we kind of landed on a solution at one point. If it's extending and going back for, kind of retroactively back to December twenty sixteen, I don't have an objection. I don't know about anybody else, but I think there is a point where we have to say enough. I mean, we're, we're making this information available to all of us.
Yeah.
To Chad's point, none of us are going to act outside of the body. We're not supposed to. The council rules dictate that we don't. Um, I, I don't have a trust issue with somebody going in and reviewing the bills. I never did from the beginning. So that's, that's where I land on this. I'm okay with it.
Okay.
And I don't have a problem with it either, but here's the thing. And Neil, you, you're the one, you always talked about cost and that, and staff, and that will take staff time if we go clear back to twenty sixteen, and that's going to, you know.
I can't imagine it would take that much time to grab them.
No, it, it, the, the year that was done just took an hour or two. So we're not talking substantial time.
I mean, it's management of record. I'm, I mean, I'm, I still, I mean, I'm landing on it. It just seems like we're debating. I don't even know if we're debating, but we're discussing.
Right, we're discussing.
Fourteen months or fifteen months worth of bills.
So should we go ahead and just say, yes, it's available to everybody, or wait until we hear back from the attorney for clarification?
I'd like to hear back from the attorney for clarification.
But, but I'm also here, seeing that that doesn't necessarily remedy this. Is that correct, Chad? If we do that, make these available, does that remedy this for this, for this attorney?
It's impossible to say for sure. I think, I think it does, um, because the way this is written, it's asking that the city council as a body have access, and you have access. And you, as a body, you always have access.
We're just going back to a different date that we're putting you back.
Yeah, and you, and you have access, as a body, you have access. If you wanted to have an executive session and say, we want to look at every single attorney bill from, you know, time immemorial to today, as long as we still have them, you guys could sit in an executive session, look at those as a body, if that's how you wanted to spend your time. What, reading between the lines and just the history of everything that's gone on, I was presuming that really what they're asking for is not that you as a body can do this, but that you would allow individual councilors to do this on their own. And if that happens, they would withdraw their request.
Well, we set that policy to begin before anyway, last year, right?
Yeah, and what they're asking for is bills, because we did it from that date moving forward, and they're asking for bills. And I don't know the significance of December two thousand sixteen.
May twenty seventeen.
Why would this attorney care if we have access to certain bills?
I don't know.
Him access to it?
No. Does not give him access to it. It's.
But he's asking for them.
But that's the, the original request is for him to get them, and, you know, if that happens, there will be some costs associated with that, because, you know, staff will have to respond to the records request, they'll have to redact the bills, they'll have to work with our office on that, and you can collect some of those costs from the requister. And so we will give them an estimate, and we'll say, here's how much it's going to cost, and we'll collect that, and then we'll do that work. But it will have staff time associated with that as well.
Okay, so, yeah, because there's kind of two different.
I don't think it's clear enough. I really don't. I mean, I don't care one way or if, if we look at them. I just don't know what the end result of what he's going for, so, I mean, but I will go with the consensus, of course, you know.
Well, what would you guys like? Do you just hold it over and, and see what happens next month if we hear back from them? Or just say, make them accessible?
Make them accessible. If it doesn't remedy it, then we're going to hear from them anyway.
Well, I think it may remedy it, because I think making them accessible to individual councilors is the, um, the bigger step than, you know, I'm basically looking at this request in one of two ways. One, he's asking for the council's a body to have that, or he's asking for individual councilors the ability to have it. And so we've already told him the council's a body has that. If that's what you're asking, are you withdrawing your request? In which case he says yes, then it doesn't matter. Or if he says no, that's not what I want, if you make the decision tonight to say, yes, individual councilors have access as well, then we can say, okay, the council made that decision as well. So, you know, in either scenario, are you withdrawing your request?
And I thought we were comfortable with that policy when we said it a year ago, plus, right?
I did too.
I was not here, so I have no idea. I'm sorry.
Can't read his mind, what?
The only two new people is Tammy, or is Tracy and Randy, that they weren't part of this.
No, uh, yeah, yeah, we weren't.
Okay, so what do we want to do? Say, yes, the council has access to going back to December twenty sixteen, or wait?
I don't have an issue with it, yeah.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion then? Or we don't even really need to make a motion?
No.
Should we just do a?
Yeah, okay. Tom, what do you think? Yes, go back to two thousand sixteen or wait till we hear back? No? Okay.
Yes.
I'm yes.
Yes.
Yes. Linda?
I think it's mute, but, yes, it's fine.
Council Ripley?
I say yes because there's something just seems fishy, and I want to see what transpires.
Hop around the corner, see what happens.
I say yes then too, so, yeah. We'll just put them in a binder, available. All righty.
Okay.
Next is Letter of Appreciation to the Oregon City Pioneer Center, which we have here.
I sent you an email regarding this letter of appreciation that Colin would like each of you to sign, and he would then attend an Oregon City, uh, City Council meeting and present this to theirs. Obviously, um, the Pioneer Center was instrumental in helping us out with continuity in providing bills to our homebound clients while he was going through his reconstruction inside. So, um, if you could each take a, a moment to sign the letter. Tammy has that here tonight, right there.
That's the worst sign.
We don't sign our own bill.
I was wondering how we were going to do that.
So, thank you for that.
All right. And then next is the Complaint on Parks Rules.
Yes, so again, um, following up in a public setting, all of you, uh, received a complaint from Bill Osburn regarding, um, our park rules. And Chad and I've talked a little bit about this, and I'm going to let him respond to his initial assessment of the complaint.
So the first thing I want to point out is that from a legal perspective, there is no obligation on behalf of the city to respond to these kinds of complaints. There's, um, there's no process. There's nothing that says that you have to do this. So to the extent that there's complaints about the fact that the city never responded to a previous complaint, there's no legal requirement that the city had to do that. Now, there's, there's lots of policy reasons why the city may want to do that. You know, it's constituent relations. It's, you know, uh, a good public, sort of, public relations as well as constituent relations. Um, to the extent that someone's raising a question about, hey, is there a problem with one of these laws that you drafted? You know, it's always good to look at that even from a risk management perspective. But, you know, I want to stress that there's no legal requirement to do so. So to the extent that the complaint is really focused on a lack of response, um, I would argue that that's a bit of a red herring, and it's not really something that the city needs to pursue from a legal perspective. If you want to look at that from a policy perspective, that's a completely different story, and that's certainly a call for you all to make. Um, as far as the complaint about the existing park rules themselves, what I would recommend at this point in time is that you just hired a new police chief tonight. Let's get the new police chief on board. Let's talk to the police chief about the rules, sort of what his experience is in enforcing park rules and, and looking at these rules, and have him work with our office on some of these constitutional concerns, and then let us come back to you with some sort of recommendation about what makes the most sense to move forward. But I really do think that sort of allowing the police, the new police chief to come in and sort of have that assessment and do that analysis would make a lot of sense for the city.
Do we want to say, hi, you're hired. Oh, and by the way, here's your first big hire.
Well, I can tell you, having, having worked with, um, the city of Hillsborough for several years, where, uh, New Chief Smurber's coming from, that they do that all the time there.
Okay.
Well, may I maybe add one step is, instead of coming back to city council, maybe go to the parks?
Yeah, I didn't, I, yeah, I didn't mean to intrude on whatever process you want to follow.
No, 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 because the, uh, one, just a little history, it took about four years to get the park rules adopted about a year or so ago, and.
Took a new parks board.
Right, and so, uh, and it was more the rules than the repercussions. And so, and it was more the rules than the repercussions. You know, and it was back and forth between parks here and the police department. And so, I think bringing them in the mix will help and be more the repercussions than what the rules themselves are. Because there's some beautiful signs just recently put up at the parks, and we didn't have to change.
If I could just clarify, just clarify one point, is that I wasn't necessarily thinking that they would look at the substance of the rules and saying, you know, "Now, we want to allow dogs off-leash," or whatever the case might be. But, you know, look at the repercussions like you're talking about, and then look if there's, you know, language that needs to sort of be clarified and make it less vague and sort of still, still reaching the same prohibitions, but just clarifying the language and making it a little more straightforward. Which makes it easier to enforce for the police officers, frankly.
Okay. All right. So, I don't think there's anything we need to do on that one.
No, but if you're comfortable, that's how I would respond to Mr. Osburn, that we've talked, or he can view this. But I will follow up with him. That would be our approach.
So, we don't need to be afraid of the ACLU on this one?
You know, you can never stop someone from suing, but I think as long as they know that we're looking at these issues and working towards it, I'd be surprised if this was a case they took on.
Okay. Thank you. All righty. Okay. Next is business from the audience.
I have no cards.
All right.
I do just have one more update on business carried forward.
Okay.
The fire chief process is moving along beautifully. The next phase for Mr. Huffman is April 23rd, which is why I couldn't do both of them. I may need to ask a special meeting so that we could also appoint him and get him to provide notice, too. So, I'm tentatively looking at April 29th or 30th. I don't know if that will come to fruition. I just wanted you to know that in order to expedite that, to call a special meeting would be helpful for us.
Okay.
And Jeff.
Yeah, he wants that done as quickly as possible. All right. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. So, the last is business from the council. So, we'll start with Counselor Mercerow.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Counselor Todd. I just wanted to remind everybody that we're looking for grand marshal nominations for the parade for this year. It's anybody who lives or works in the city that has, you know, been a volunteer person, a leader, that sort of stuff, that all of the sort of suggestions for what a good nominee would be is on the website, which is gladstonecommunityfestival.org. Deadline for it to be turned in is June 15th.
Look at that.
I will not be selecting Rotary Select, so I just want, that's it. What was that?
The festival select. We already have one already.
Oh, someone, you already have one picked, or just in?
No, we already have a nomination.
Oh, a nomination. I was like, what? Well, now, we have two, so we've got to go fill out the paperwork for that second one. Okay, Counselor Reisner.
Thank you. Item 11 brought up thoughts in regards, you know, talking about personnel contracts and such, that we were, staff has been working on some RFQs, I hope I'm saying that right, in regards to attorney, engineer. And we were kind of holding off until we got a police chief, fire chief. So, now that they're, that work is pretty much behind us.
I don't have the time. I'm still trying to get them hired. So, this summer would be helpful. And remember, I only have a part-time human resources person. But, yeah, I understand that you want those out there, but.
Well, I'm just asking what's happening.
We haven't, we haven't put anything together for those. If I could get it out there this summer, that would be great.
Right. So, and which, thanks for bringing up part-time human resource finance, in that being part-time has been, I think, a little restrictive. So, what's the timeline in maybe making some decisions or recommendations on staffing in those regards?
So, at the Budget Committee meeting, we had a proposal to increase part-time to full-time, but our budget will not sustain that.
Right.
So, it's going to stay part-time. And on that list of others to hire, we have an executive assistant for the police department, a utility billing. We will be also hiring for Nancy's replacement before the end of this year. And then Kathy Brucker will be coming to me at the end of May for her to talk about what her future desires are and whether or not she would like to stay on. And the .75 capacity that we put into the budget for a finance manager. But all of those positions will need to be filled by the end of this year, yes.
So, what I wasn't quite sure about is to combining or moving, you know, different positions together. So, that's not the plan?
No. They're very specialized, finance and human resources. And we can't afford a finance director, so we budgeted for .75 finance manager. And then I do need a full-time HR person, but our budget for general fund won't sustain that. So, I'm concerned about when we recruit, what level we're going to get for a part-time HR person, but those are the realities that I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it?
Happy Easter. Don't forget the 20th with the, oh, shoot, Easter egg hunt at the high school. Pancake breakfast.
Counselor Tracy?
Real quick, so I just commend all of our departments for putting together thorough staff reports, reporting back on the last month. Of course, Public Works wins all kinds of awards with all the challenges that they have. And then I also did speak to Chief Yamashita this evening. Very impressed with how our police department handles extremely difficult challenges and very appreciative of that. We have stuff coming up that we're all going to be dealing with, water, raids, things. So, I'm going to keep my ear to the ground, but again, Jim, directly why not? I don't know how you do it, quite frankly. I mean, some of these things, I can't even imagine opening manholes up and finding some of the stuff that you find, and then having trucks tip over in the middle of the street. So, not his truck, by the way. Not our new back truck. So, anyway, just commanding the staff. They're doing a great job. Thanks.
Counselor Neese?
Just a couple of things. I didn't get my report in the packet because I was gone. And anyway, a couple of things I want to highlight. I'm on the steering committee for the homeless, and we had a meeting last month, but I had the opportunity to tour the Oregon City Courts with the homeless. And very impressed, and got to meet the judge and how they handle things and how, and what Oregon City does. So, they're not going through the regular courts, they're going through the homeless courts. And it's very impressive. And I've talked to Jackie a little bit about this, and I had a conversation with Kim Yoshida on it, and how we can kind of maybe look at some partnerships of what we can do to make some improvements to help our city. And I want to encourage everyone, Kiwanis has their spaghetti dinner. Now that the senior center is up and running again, and it's going to be May 18th from 5:00 to 8:00. And I want to encourage everyone to think about it, put it on your calendar, and I hope that you will come join us.
And where's it going to be, Linda?
It's going to be at the Gladstone.
Same as that?
Uh-huh. So, they postponed it. They normally have it in April, and they moved it to May because of the senior center. So, they were waiting for the opening. So, they're real excited, and they're planning that. And yes, the breakfast is, pancake breakfast is coming.
Counselor Ripley?
I don't have any.
All right. I just have a couple of things. First is the water tourism board is, or I don't, what do we call it?
Recreation studio?
Studio. They call it a studio. I don't know what studio, water tourism. Yesterday was the tour of the Lower Clackamas, and we highlighted High Rocks, which was kind of a mistake yesterday because High Rocks disappeared. But there were some pretty cool trees that came down while we were doing our tour. There was three vans full of very enthusiastic river people, and they have some amazing ideas. The conversation came up about the Whitewater Park again.